My whole family.
Ready? Start off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to their father for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever being just one.
Fire exits our mark. If you have your cell phone with you, we ask you to have them turn it off so I don't get interrupted. And. Let me do a roll call.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexander.
Here.
Patrick Duane.
Here.
Melanie Mara.
Here.
Egonine Martin.
Here.
Alan Reese.
Here.
Jeff Baker.
Here.
Matthew Favreau.
Here.
And can we have a motion that the ad was advertised for this meeting if required?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
And I'll vote on that.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Duane.
Yes.
Melanie Mara.
And we have a motion to approve last month's minutes and waive the reading of those minutes.
Second.
And roll call.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexander. Patrick Duane.
Yes.
Melanie Mara.
Yes.
And we can go on to all business, which would be with Steve.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members, we will not be hearing appeal number twenty-two fifty-nine. They pulled it from, uh, this month. If anybody's here for that, it will not be heard. Hopefully by next month, if it goes in front of town board and after fifteen days after there, uh, it'll be allowed use unless it's challenged. Uh, we had quite a few changes to our ordinances where we missed wherethes, shalls, and, uh, on the actual zoning map where it should have been one parcel over, some of the colors, uh, should have been over. So with, uh, the planning department, Trevor and Jess hopefully will be in front of the town board in two meetings and then ten days after that, then it'll be allowed use and it'll be off our plate. If everything goes according to plan, so therefore, Mr. Murnane, uh, from Stafford and Owens asked that it be tabled until next month. And if it's still, if it's gonna keep on, say if it gets challenged, then he might come to us. But as of right now, he asked for another thirty day extension.
And the new business.
Hey, I was saying, I think to be safe, Mr. Reese makes a good point. We did advertise for a public hearing on that tonight, so I think we should, even though they pulled it, it's not gonna be heard, so if anybody's here, so if they would like to be heard on this, I think we should let them do that, especially if they may not be here next month.
We will open up public hearing portion of the meeting. If anybody here would like to speak about the, uh, the movie theater out on Route Nine North, you can come up and speak. Not seen anybody up close to public hearing portion of the meeting and make the move on to the new business.
Motion.
Motion. Able it?
Yes.
Well, now, we don't want to run table it, because tableing at this time runs against us. They've asked that it be rescheduled to next month. We're just granting their request that it be taken off tonight's calendar and rescheduled if they're convenient.
So we don't need a motion then?
Correct.
Good. Uh, the next one is, uh, Marion Abby Borey. You guys wanna come from, from right up front and center? Uh, they're asking for right in the, right in the front seat, right up higher. We got a spot, we turned it on. So it's nine eighty-seven Cumberland Head Road. They're asking for a request to install privacy fence that's eight foot in height when the maximum allowable fence height is six feet in an R four district. Alan has some pictures and what was submitted to us. He'll go over and try to give you guys an idea of where this place is next to the ferry.
Mr. Chairman, we're out on the Cumberland Head. It's down through the point. So this is Cumberland, we're down, highway coming down through here. That ferry is down here in the bottom corner. This is the parcel right here on the, right hand side. You can see all this area here is all zoned R four. So this is the parcel we're talking about right here. Got a garage up front house here. I believe they're looking to put, uh, the fence, eight foot high fence across this property line right here. Here's kinda what it looks like today. There is a little bit of a six foot fence already right here, but I'm not sure who that belongs to.
Fence is actually seven foot and the property owner next door to us installed that fence.
Okay. So anything you'd like to add, ma'am? It's all yours.
I, you have to apologize if I've been shitting. My husband is ill tonight, so.
Well, the basic thing is, is I understand that there is quite the bit of activity on your north side on weekends especially.
Um, it's an Airbnb. There's two separate homes that are rented out as an Airbnb. The one right behind that seven foot fence that our neighbor put in, um, which looks directly into my back door, and the one up front, which is the big house, which is right on the road. They have, um, windows right along that north side of us that look, again, right into my home. It's basically traffic non-stop. Um, a six foot fence wouldn't be a big deal, but they're higher than we are. So if we put up a six foot fence, they're still looking right over the top of us.
So would you say that it is more for security?
In, in my opinion, yes, it's more for security. I don't let my daughter go outside and play because it's a revolving door of people in both of those homes, especially during the summer. We've had problems with that thing as well.
The total length of your property line?
Um, I don't think it would. Um, his fence there seems to suffice, so it would probably just go from there down to the road.
So extending off of his. We will open up public hearing portion of the meeting. Anybody here would like to speak to this matter? Just give your name and address.
I'm Jared Jabut. I live at fifty-three Pior Drive, which directly looks over Abby and Christmas House. So I just need, I just wanted clarity on where the fence was gonna go, and it seems like it's just going along the Christmas property line. Okay, cool. And I would have to concur with her, as an eight foot fence would absolutely be, with the way their property is, 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 great runs, they need something that's taller than that to block out the traffic. There is a heavy traffic that Airbnb location for, and the, the transients that come in and out. There is some security issue there for sure. I have young children like Abby does, so I would hundred percent back her on putting that eight foot fence up, being her direct neighbor up here.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? And, okay, we can close the public hearing portion of the meeting.
We have one letter to the record. Uh, it's actually the owner of the, uh, neighbor. Hi, Steve. I'm in receipt of your letter dated March twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three regarding the zoning variance application number twenty-two seventy. I wanted to let you know, I have no objection to an eight foot fence proposed by Cory and Abby Borey. Best regards, Chris Levine. He's the owner of the Airbnb home.
I remember a few years ago, there was something over in Cliff Haven for the fence.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, any board members have any questions that they would like to have further asked? No? Anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the request for the eight foot fence.
Oh, second. And a second, and show hands on that. And a roll call vote.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Duane.
Yes.
Melanie Mara.
Yes.
So the next one is Daniel Sines on behalf of the shoe department Encore at seventy-three Center Drive. Uh, there's two area variances being asked for. One's a request to be installed a hundred and forty square foot sign in the front of the building with eighty-five square feet, more than fifty-five square feet allowed in a T five zoning district in appeal twenty-two seventy-two. His request to be allowed to install a second sign in the building measuring seventy-nine feet when only one building designs allowed in a T five zoning district. Alan has some pictures of what it looks like.
Here, Mr. Chairman, this is the, the Lowe's area. So this is Lowe's right here, Market Thirty-two, Runnings, and then this over here in the corner is Planet Fitness. It used to be Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, right here, where the shoe department liked to go to. So it's all zoned T five. So a little closer view, this is the Lowe's, here's running, Planet Fitness is here. So we're looking at this end of the building, and the sign is on the front here and one on this back corner right here facing this direction. So here's what it looks like today. This right here. I will point out that, uh, there's a project for Planet Fitness to actually take over some of that space here, so it's not gonna actually be as big as what Bed Bath &amp; Beyond was before. Here's a sign on the backside here. You can see that Planet Fitness also has one on the very back of theirs right here. So this is what advocate forward to us. Basically the same two pictures I took. This is what they're proposing. Gentlemen, all yours.
Okay. So I'm Jesse with Daniel Sines, and this is Andrew with the shoe department company. Uh, he's the regional manager of the area, and, uh, they're looking to take over this, uh, rental space and make it a shoe store. Um, the existing signage is there now. Um, the reduction of size comparison to this drawing here is approximately thirty-eight percent less in size from the existing signage there on the front of the building. Um, the, the height restriction, the new code says that you're allowed a thirty-six foot, thirty-six inch tall sign, and this one here, they're asking for six inches additional in height for a forty inches tall to fill out that space. Um, from my understanding, the storefront is not changing. It's, it's the wall in between the two businesses that's actually moving between Planet Fitness. But as far as I, my understanding from the drawings I have seen, the storefront stays the same. Just an interior wall that moves, you know, ten feet left or right essentially, fifteen feet. I'm not sure the exact dimension.
So the, the code now states we get eighty-five square feet?
No, we get fifty-five.
You have fifty-five square feet.
Yes, it is. Yeah, fifty-five square feet is what they allow. And then there's a multiplier. That's based on what they would be leasing, the front of the store, what they'd leasing. So even though Mr. Daniel was saying the storefront doesn't change, in our opinion it does. The facade doesn't change out front, but where the wall is or the lease line is, that's gotten shorter.
The lease line does change. The storefront where you enter does not change, from my understanding. Yeah. And then, so that fifty-five square feet, there is a sixty percent multiplier that is added on, uh, which is allowed because of the distance off the road.
That's, yeah, that's right. That's why I got that in there.
So that fifty-five includes the multiplier or doesn't?
It does.
How big is this storefront?
Their storefront's only gonna be about sixty feet across, isn't it? Based off the plans that were given to us.
You have, what you submitted was sixty-eight feet long. So this is based on the current code, the maximum, this is going off from yours now from ours. This is just what was submitted to us. Uh, this would equal fifty-four square foot of signage for the storefront at a sixty-eight feet long, thirty-two inch tall. So that, uh, I'm gonna read the whole. Based on the current code, maximum sign for the storefront is point five per square foot, linear foot maximum hundred, with an additional sixty foot allowed in the signs located more than a hundred feet. That would equal fifty-four square feet of signage. That's with the multiplier that was submitted to us. And then approximately, you're asking for seventy-eight. Does that sound correct? That's what was submitted to us.
Yes, it was. So, yeah, that's correct. The, uh, the corporate has changed some of the paperwork along the line from the home office. So that's where some, some of the variables may be. Um, but the drawing for the signage is correct. That's what they're asking for is that size. They had original stacked version, kinda like Bed Bath &amp; Beyond had drawn, and I told them that that was definitely not feasible, uh, using that same, uh, six feet by, uh, thirty feet long essentially of signage. I told them that that was definitely out off the map. So that's when they came back to me with this drawing of the forty inch tall version that fills that, that space of the, the front entrance way. And if you back up to, um, Al, can you back up to the, um, the picture would be, you know, Planet Fitness next door, so you can see the kind of the size of the sign? Um, yeah, there's one more back that shows, uh, both of the signs at the same time, right there. So it'd be a similar look to the, uh, the Planet Fitness in size and height, and then would fill that storefront very similar, as far as the, you know, the flow and continuity of everything.
Public hearing portion of the meeting, I'll open it up. Did this, it went down to the county, correct? You guys, nothing you wanna read in or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Public hearing first?
Well, it's part of the public hearing. Okay. So it did go down to, Mr. Chairman, went down to, uh, the county for referral forty twenty-three. Uh, they said it was a local issue, seven in favor, uh, zero not in favor of the action. Clinton County Planning Board, it's April fifth, twenty-twenty-three meeting, voted seven oh to consider the request a local issue with the following comments forward to the town. The town is highly encouraged to reexamine the zoning ordinance regarding signs for businesses due to the large number of area variances, uh, that are forward to the county planning board. We did, and this is the ordinance that was submitted by the community, for everybody else to reduce the size of signage in our T three or T five zoning.
Mr. Chairman, can I get a point of clarification from the advocate? What size letters are these?
Forty inch.
Forty inch?
Yeah.
It's another variance. They allow thirty-six inch letters.
I thought it was under, that the height in oversize was rolled into the one, and then the second variance for the side sign.
No. No, we got, you got, you got the, the si, the size, square footage total.
Okay.
And then the second one is adding on to the side of the building. So now you're asking for a third one for the height of this letter.
In height.
Is that likewise for the one on the side is forty inches tall too?
Uh, no.
Twenty-four, I believe. Twenty-four.
Okay.
Yeah. Says the billing that we have proposed unstacked twenty-four inch height letters for visibility necessary, who cannot see the storefront sign, uh, visibility to traffic exiting I eighty-seven.
So the side sign is just a square footage issue?
Yeah. No, it would be secondary sign too.
Anybody here like to speak to this matter? If you do, you can step up to the microphone and let us know where you're at. Nobody here wants to speak to this matter, so we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting and go on to our board. I would put questions or comments that they might have.
If you, uh, reduced that sign to, uh, thirty-six inches.
Okay.
What would that do to the length of it?
Overall square footage. Um, it would, uh, let's see, I'd say thirty-six, we save six. I would say it'd probably trim it down by, uh, by about twenty-five square feet roughly, just quick math off the top of my head. Cause you're gonna take six inches off the top, times the length, and then you'd save another, you'd save another potential couple of feet in the length overall. Yeah, just depending on how it falls. And so that's the size that's allowed in height is the thirty-six. Uh, it might just put us over in the overall square footage.
It's like the hundreds.
Uh, it would still put us over probably in the square footage set around.
Be less of a variance that you do.
Correct, yes. It'd be, it'd be less of a variance, yes. I mean, if that was an option, the customer would be interested in that, I'm sure, uh, from the, the other variable.
And the other thing, uh, just you put thirty on the ones, on the one, and then, and your description that says twenty-four. So we got descriptions in your application. And what the application, we're not supposed to negotiate here. The application they're asking for is this.
So what happened with the application is the, the, the national branding company submitted it, and then wanted me to come to the meeting on everybody's behalf essentially. And so there were some changes and adjustments, I believe, or some errors, if you will, along the line, um, from, from them to here. And so I do see, uh, here's a thirty, um, thirty inch letter. This is the other drawing for the side sign. And then that one comes at, that one comes in at three square feet, based on thirty inch tall, just as far as a reference point, comparison to the forty.
So you'd definitely be reducing down if you got thirty-six inch taller.
Yes. Yeah. So, yeah, substantial. And so I believe it would put us, uh, yeah, I would say it's about thirty, somewhere around thirty square feet last year, I'm assuming. Going to a thirty-six inch letter.
And the other part of the consideration could be the fact that the other signs throughout that plaza.
Are all large.
Are all large.
And most of the businesses in that plaza have multiple signs. They all have Price Chopper, uh, which is Market Thirty-two. Lowe's has three or four signs. Applebee's has, uh, three, yeah, signs. Um, Planet Fitness has two signs.
The one I think it probably does in the Runnings.
I believe it's correct.
Board members, comments?
I think if, if they reduced it to thirty-six inches, uh, that would, that would put a buffer on the sides, I think. And it seemed like a, a better fit.
I just did the math, and that would, that would save you about thirty square feet. So it put us about a hundred and, a hundred and twenty square feet approximately. It'd be thirty, thirty square feet less than what the other applications asked.
Yeah, but the numbers on the variance right now don't match because I used the ones from a diagram. So when I put on there that you're asking for a hundred and forty, they're not. They're asking for more than that because the letters are taller. Okay? So when, when you say you wanna shrink it down to thirty-six inches, the numbers I have was for a thirty-two inch letter.
What do you have? You have what, five oh five on there? You have a thirty-two inch letter?
That's the only diagram I have. That's what you turned in, right?
No. There's a, a thirty inch for the side sign and a forty inch for the front sign. There, there's similar drawings, but they're, they're a thirty and a forty.
Forty. So the shoe is forty, side is thirty.
Yeah.
And you have the almighty question. They're not open. What's the hardship when you're not open? People can't see you? You haven't been open yet. How can you say that, what's the argument that they can't see the place? Oh, we never been able to saw thirty inch sign. The doors haven't been open yet.
You doing math?
I'm just cross checking it, just to make sure. But yes, that, that, the forty is correct. That math is correct on the forty inch sign.
Are you forty inches within your, what, one oh five feet? Is that what it is talking?
Five oh five on there. Five oh five on that drawing.
Okay. That's what I'm missing.
And then, uh, and so that math does work on script, but it just correct at one forty. And now if we reduce it down to thirty-six inch, it puts a thirty square feet less, which would be one ten.
Yeah, just wanna make sure. I wanna make sure my numbers are correct. That way they, they.
I apologize. I said just a little bit messiness the way they wanted to do this.
All right. So the only thing messed up was the, I didn't catch you. You got the math right, but I didn't catch that forty inch versus thirty-six inch.
So thirty-six inch sign would be a hundred and ten square feet.
Oh, you did, Alan. We have three separate ones. So here's the third one. It does say thirty-six. Then you have a thirty, then you have a forty. So they have three separate applications in here. So this application was to be desired. So you did do it correct, depending on which one that they submitted. See how this one shows the thirty-six?
Yep.
But then thirty on here and forty on.
What's the thirty-sixty on, on feet?
Very stacked, I would say.
That was, that was one that got thrown out. Yeah.
And this is the thirty. Then you have the forty for the front, but then we have another thirty for the rear.
Which is correct. Yeah. The thirty and the forty are correct. The thirty-six was just a drawing that I told them that was not gonna fly.
Was there a stack?
Thirty-six stacked. It's not. That was just there for reference.
Okay. And then nothing on the front, uh, your entrance where the existing and the proposed one going out front?
Uh, for the road sign, it, uh, was a swap for space to space. And I believe that's what you do with it now.
Okay.
There's no question for that, as far as my understanding.
Just in case you wanna know, the sign over on Runnings, it's a hundred and fifty-seven square feet. So the running sign, which is the one next door, Planet Fitness is actually, their front sign is seventy-five square feet, their back sign is forty-nine square feet. Just to give you references for, where this sits in between those two buildings.
So it's comparable to Runnings?
Bed Bath, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, their, their front and their back was a total of two-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet.
More than a store that's six times its size. Seventy-nine thousand square feet compared to twelve-ish, ten, nine?
And that was, that was a variance for that signage back in the day. It was approved on board.
Do you have anything to say, Mr. Matthew?
We, the second part of the balancing test is whether or not the advocate can achieve his goal by some other method. It's impossible to know that yet because, like Steve said, we had, we held O'Reilly Auto Parts to that standard. The buildings aren't open yet. How can you have a problem? We held Wendy's to that standard. We held Nissan to that standard.
So then what happened with the Morris Home Care, the KPL, and that, that zoning, uh, the third time, it hit last month. It was a weird, it was, uh, a lot of our common rule with the height, the height restriction that approved. It was supposed to be on a five feet tall, and it approved for ten.
I think the board made a.
On the code.
Yeah, I think the board made a finding that that sign kept, that variance kept that particular sign in line with everything else on the street. Cause they, just, I think two properties, west and east, if it had signs at the same height already. So I think they made that. That was a factual finding they made that allowed that variance to go through.
They actually, they actually lowered what was existing. They made it, it's a step of mine, but they made a poll, so you actually see around it, and then consistently what is in that neighborhood, and that's why they got their variance.
I mean, it's the similar thing they're asking for. They're asking for less than what's there originally, and then it also keeps the consistent with the neighborhood. And that's those, both of those items, this project is still doing the same things. They're asking for less, and they're trying to keep the consistent feel of looking across the parking lot and looking at the signage.
Yeah. Big parking lot.
What's the square footage you guys are occupying?
The lease space?
Yes.
I do not have the exact lease space in front of me.
Fifteen, fifteen-three, I think.
Fifteen thousand square foot and when you say consistent, Runnings, they're asking for more than Runnings, and Runnings is seventy-eight thousand square.
I thought Runnings was just, what, did you just say Runnings was?
Hundred and fifty-seven.
Yeah. And they're down to a hundred.
Correct. Someplace in that area, area, a hundred square feet signage?
If you look at the balancing test, as Matt said, whether the advocate can be achieved by other means, and, I mean, buildings have to have signs, but, and, and there's an irritable change in neighborhood character, nearby properties. It's, uh, I think, commercial area up and down the way. This one is where the, the request is substantial, and if you look at it compared to Bed Bath &amp; Beyond's sign, it's definitely reduced, but whether the request will have adverse fiscal or environmental effects, you don't see any of that, and whether the, the difficulty is self-created, again, that doesn't necessarily negate us from granting if it was, but it's not self-created. So, anybody else? Anybody that can make a motion?
Could you, uh, explain again the, um, that it's not open yet, and what is, you know, what is the problem?
It's a simple thing that as long as the store isn't open yet, they can't say that they're not doing any business because they don't have a sign, where the sign isn't big enough.
Well, not that they don't have a sign, that they don't have this big of a sign.
Yeah. And the second, the second part of the test is whether or not the advocate can achieve his goal by some other method. So until they have a store open with a smaller sign, you can't tell whether or not a small sign is effective. And what they would need to do is open, come back in here and say, we don't have the foot traffic we're expecting because we don't think people can find us.
If you had complaints of like traffic, of safety, of, man, we can never find you. We can't see the place. We can't, if you got ten, fifteen, twenty complaints a week or more, then you have a valid argument. It's very hard to argue when you're not open.
Yeah, okay. I mean, but why would you want to open a business and have to struggle to survive in the beginning and have a hard time? People finding it, have a hard time to improve business. And then also the, if they're already having hardships, why would they want to spend more money to increase the sign by six inches? It's not even just stretch it or add to it. You have to, you know, physically remove, make and reinstall a whole nother project. Which would cost more than it would be if it were to be originally installed because you have to move on.
Right. So that's a business model. If you come into an area and if your signage doesn't make or break your business, that's your argument? That you didn't do enough business analysis to come in there to say, boy, if we don't get this hundred square foot sign, we're gonna, our whole business model doesn't work. In a brand new sign ordinance.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't saying that it was hardship. I'm saying that, uh, to wait a year to figure that out, if they're having problems, you know, to come back for a variance because of that, just doesn't seem likely.
Well, if, if I could ask, uh, what is your justification for that design versus what the zoning code says?
That is the, the sign that they came up with for size based on square footage and footprints, based on other locations in the United States. And it's just kind of a, a textbook, you know, these.
It's not, yeah, but that's not a justification. You're, you're saying that's what they came up with, but.
Alright.
Well, that's their standard things that they go by.
You know, certain stores, they have, they have a certain size sign that they like to put on certain sized businesses. That's just kind of their model. They don't all do the same thing. Some things do things differently. Some are, you know, bigger road signs, some are smaller this. There's variables.
But then what's the point of a zoning code?
Probably went through that before too. That's why it's what the variables are, but yeah. Yeah. It's because not all applications are equal. Not all places are equal. Somebody might have a large storefront and a small store. Somebody might have a small storefront and a large store. There might be distances setbacks off the roads. And that's where the variance comes in.
Yeah, but that's why I'm asking, what, what is your justification?
So they would like to have visibility from, you know, Price Chopper, from Lowe's, you know, they'd like to have that visibility in the county parking lot to see where else they can shop next and spend money.
And they wouldn't have that visibility with the zoning code? With the dimensions of.
I'm just saying it's easier. It's, you know, the more visible it is, the easier it is.
The bigger it is, the, where it's bigger the sign, it's easier to see.
Of course, yes. Something is more legible, it's easier to see, perhaps.
See, I don't see that as a justification. The bigger it is, the easier to see.
Man, essentially they're asking for a six inch difference in height. This big, looking across the parking lot at five hundred feet. And, you know, this was the size difference that they're asking. When you do the math, it starts to add up square footage wise, but, but this is, this is all they're asking for, you know, the height of this pen. This is the conversation we're having.
You're talking about you've got the letters down to thirty-six inch?
Right. Originally they're asking for the forty. Thirty-six complies.
Right.
In height.
Right.
And so they were, they were asking for forty, is what they were asking for.
Right.
Yeah.
But the forty, with the amount of letters that are up there, puts it out.
Over the square footage also. And the same thing happens with the thirty-six.
Yeah.
Yes, what happens, but it's half as much.
That's, our job is to get the least amount of variance.
Yep.
That's what it is, so.
Don't get me, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to be hard on any business by any stretch, but variances are supposed to be hard to get. It's not, I want to get this. What's, if you're gonna grant this, fine. You gotta make a factual finding. What sets this application apart from Planet Fitness a month around saying, hey, they, they got a bigger sign. We, we want a bigger sign now just because it's gonna keep it in line with how the building should look because their sign is bigger. There's gotta be something factually different that you can point to about this application as to why a variance should get granted or not. If you can't find that, if it's just they want it because they want it, which I totally understand, you shouldn't be granting a variance because somebody wants it without some factual thing you could point to to say why you should grant this. Cause then what stops every other business in that plaza from coming and saying, we want a bigger sign now just because we want it? They're, I mean, they're honestly, the better argument for it first of all is the one on the other side of the building for the interstate. So you can see where this building is, not the one facing Market Thirty-two. Three, six inches in height, you're not gonna notice the sign any different or not for six inches in height. That argument doesn't hold water. They want on the other side of the building so you can see it coming off the eighty-seven ramp. That to me is a much different argument than the one face, the front of the store one saying, we want it because it's gonna look better, which is what you're hearing. Aesthetically, that sign would look better. They're probably right, but that's not what the variance calls for, or that's not what the ordinance calls for. So just keep those things in mind.
And so it's not just because they want it, is what I'm saying. If, if that's the way I interpret it to you folks, I'm sorry, but, uh, no, it's also so it's more legible. And a larger sign is more legible. There's, there's feasibility start charts that show, you know, how, if a letter is one inch taller, how much further back you can see it, you know? And so at, you know, a six inch height letter, that's that much bigger, you would be able to see it more legible at a hundred feet further back. And there is physical charts for those and, and studies that have been done.
Well, it's the same thing along the northway or whatever, where they have to have certain sized letters just because you're traveling at sixty.
Your street sign, yes. Yeah, your speed limit sign is a certain size. Your, your street sign on the road is a certain size. That's correct.
So what is, what is the allowed height of those?
Thirty-six inches.
Thirty-six inches.
Is allowed.
Is allowed.
Yep.
Okay. So where's the variance coming out of?
Because of the size, it would be.
Even if all these were thirty-six inches, it'd still be too big overall, right? Because of the space and stuff, okay?
So. And they, they probably could go down to even a thirty inch height letter. And you'd be almost cutting it by a third.
The thirty inch would put you at, you have the seventy-nine square feet based on thirty inches tall. And then the thirty-six would put you at one hundred and ten square feet.
What is the allowed for that?
The one, the one.
Around fifty-five. So it'd be, it'd be twice the size, twice as much what they're allowing.
Thirty inch or?
I don't know. He asked, what, what's square footage only allowed? Allowed fifty-five square foot sign. So.
Okay.
Twice and an additional sign. So twice as much and an additional sign are the two variances.
We went through that with Planet Fitness on that sign on the back, didn't we?
Yes.
Yes.
They came back, I think it was a year later.
Right.
Just, just for that second sign, a year later, saying, yes, they waited about three hundred and sixty-five days.
They painted it purple, but they didn't put a sign up until.
Right.
Yeah.
So there is precedence, but even though precedence goes away, we have a new ordinance. So the new ordinance, the same way the county said, we suggest to do a new ordinance, I think it's time we make a recommendation to the board to say, we did. Here's the new ordinance. Maybe you guys should have read it when we sent it down today. Should we open and close the public here?
Yeah.
Open it, open it, close it.
I thought I did.
You're gonna take each request as a separate vote, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I want to hear somebody else's.
Yeah. Comments?
If, if I look at it, I would think that it would be nice to see thirty inch height letters going across the front. And I think we'd be at about twenty square feet over what the actual ordinance is and be still visible. And that's mine.
So just to keep in mind too, just if we don't have a problem, a seizure, variance request is what it is. So it's an up or down vote on what the request is. They won't amend the request. On the record, they kept it right now. It's, you say, I'd like thirty, I'd like, that might, whatever. It's not a vote on whether or not you think it should be thirty as letters. It's a vote on the variance request as it is before you write it.
Yeah.
So forty inch letters and two and a half times the allowed, something like that?
A hundred and forty square feet.
Fifty-five, so that's three, one forty-five.
And when you say we've amended, we'd have to, uh, bring it back or would?
If you want to amend it now and, and ask the board for a variance, that's not what you're asking for and writing on it, that's fine. They just need to know what they're, they need to vote yes or no on variance requesting X.
But if they vote now, no, you won't be allowed to come back.
Correct.
Just because you decided to change it to a smaller letter. So keep that in mind. Once they vote, they vote, that's it.
You have to table it.
You could come back and. You could do, you could table it and come back with a new package if you wanted to before they were voted.
Yeah, if you need to get permission from somebody else first, yeah.
So, probably to go to thirty inch and have the, I know this is where the corporate is.
I know.
So. I guess my, uh, my thoughts are to, um, amend it to thirty inch and then it would be about twenty square feet over. It seems like that'd be a possibility to move forward and keep this project moving. Um, I don't know their timelines as far as the build outs and stuff. Sometimes things go fast and sometimes they go out. I don't know. Um, but I said, this project's a little different the way they approached me with it and, uh, so it's, it's a little bit messier than the average local issue that I deal with the customer directly. And I apologize.
So what's the actual?
So what's the sign?
So the size would be the, the drawing. If you look at this drawing here, this is the thirty inch. It'd be this, it should be the same footprint, thirty inches tall. And would be, uh, seventy-nine square feet. Seventy, seventy-eight point nine.
That variance would be for an additional twenty square feet?
Correct.
Twenty-four, yeah.
And so now we don't need the height variance.
It'd just be twenty square feet.
Just the square foot variance.
Correct.
I think Alan said it was twenty-four square feet.
Twenty-four square feet?
Yeah.
Twenty-four.
So I'll make a motion that, uh, if they, and the sign to thirty inches, uh, I would approve the variance. They have twenty-four square feet.
Okay, we got a second.
Seven.
Are, are you making that motion because in doing so, you're making a factual finding that that size sign on the front would keep it in line with the one right next door in Planet Fitness office? So aesthetically, they would look similar?
The whole place would look similar.
Are you making that factual finding?
Yes.
Oh, yeah? Sure.
Show of hands on that and roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alex Davis. Patrick Dune. Melanie Mark.
Yes.
And then the next one would be the twenty-four inches on the backside, the side side.
Correct, yeah. So this one's on the, uh, the side of this building and it faces the throughway ramp, northway ramp. And the, um, letter type on that one, I have to pull up my paperwork.
Twenty-three. Twenty-one, twenty-two, five.
Is the same size, is the same size as the one you just approved for the front building.
Yeah.
Is the drawing that they have.
The letters are thirty inch, right?
The letters are thirty inch, yes, correct. Yeah. The sign that's there now is forty-five inches tall. And is, um, just shy of thirty feet long.
Jesse, you may want to go through why this is needed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So these, this sign here is again, when it's coming off the ramp, so people start to get aware of where they're at. And then, you know, just marketing, advertising purposes on the side of the building, they can see it as they're coming in. They have an idea where they're going, you know, to the next place or where, some other place that they're going to shop. Now, um, the sign's been there for numerous years. The, the, the business next door has one on the side of the building. Lowe's has one on the back of the building also facing the, the same area. Um, and so the, uh, the customer has, uh, proposed the sign for the side of the building.
How many square feet is this one now?
Uh, this sign is the same seventy-nine, um, seventy-eight point nine square feet. It's the same thirty inch letter set. That's in the other drawing. Uh, the existing sign that's there now is forty-five inches tall. Um, this sign would be approximately thirteen square feet less than the existing sign that's there.
Okay. Uh, public hearing portion of the meeting will open up for this sign. Anybody here like to speak to this matter? And that's the, any hands go up? You got a county thing on this one?
We only got the one.
Oh, you got the one?
Yeah.
I think they cookie cutter it for both essentially, you know, with that.
So we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting and board members have anything else that they would like to hear or say or say?
So what's a variance here? Is it just, we're lying on the side of the building?
Second sign.
Second sign on the side of the building. But it's consistent with the other stores we have.
Yeah. And I mean, it's let's square footage then what?
Right.
Bed Bath, yeah.
Yeah, that's for sure, sure.
And it's one of those things where you go in fifty or whatever miles per hour around that corner there. Breathing, so I don't know how important that is, but that's considerations. Which one should I look at, huh?
I'm, I'm okay with it, really.
I am too. I am gonna make a motion.
We're gonna allow that second song. We should do the balancing test first.
Okay.
Just make sure we get on the roll. Sorry about that. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means to the applicant is, uh, it's a notification type system there. We're going around that rampway to, to say that you are in that space now. Uh, what, undesirable change in neighborhood character or nearby properties. And again, we just discussed all the stories in that area pretty much have. Whether the request is substantial and it's twenty square feet and it's a second sign. Going with the character of the area too. Whether the request will have adverse fiscal, environmental effects on there and whether the request is, uh, self-created, it is not self-created. Now.
I'll make a motion to approve this second sign.
The second. And show, yeah. Mary Ann and show of hands and roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alex Davis.
Yes.
Patrick Dune.
Yes.
Melanie Mark.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Next one is TDC sixty-one Area Development Drive, appeal number two-two-seven-four and two-two-seven-five. Uh, we'd like some clarification, though, just from the applicant before we start. You check the box for two and typically you don't do two. So this is, you either get an interpretation of the ordinance or asking for a variance. Cause if you get one, then you don't get the other. And if you do one, it goes vice versa. So on the application that we submitted for, one was for the height variance and then was for an interpretation. So from the board to our attorney, which one was required to?
So if you want the interpretation, we do that tonight, but we didn't do the variance?
No, we want the variance. That's just me being inexperienced of submitting a variance.
Okay.
So, yeah, I guess my thinking was I wanted interpretation of the clauses here and with that would, um, equal our cause for variance.
So that being said, uh, there is sixty-one Area Development Drive area requests. We allowed a forty square foot sign on an existing freestanding sign, which is only thirty-five. Allowed in a T-four commercial district. The other one is for an area variance to be allowed to maintain six foot height of a sign and a maximum allowable five foot T-four versus zoning. Alan can go over the details, which he has for this one.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, this is Route Three. The military turnpike is here. This is, um, Area Development Drive right here. So this parcel right out front, this used to be the, uh, admin administrative offices for the government corps. Uh, now being leased out, there is a sign right out here on Route Three and this is the one we're talking about. So you can see this is all T-four here. And we're talking about that parcel right there. So this is the building. Sign sits right there. Here's what the sign looks like today. So it does have a landscape base. It's got a landscaping, or it's got a, a stone base with a landscaping around it. So the sign itself, you know, we're talking about square footage wise, it's just this sign. And then on the second variance, it's the height. So it's actually from the ground to the top point is the height.
So if they put down a bunch of soil around there, they get it to the five foot height?
If they did what?
Put a bunch of soil around the base.
You know what? If, if they, if they would, uh, cover, put soil up to this point on the base, bring it out at least three feet, because that's what the three foot thing is, then yeah, they wouldn't worry about the height. I'm not sure how pretty that would look, but yeah. Okay, so this is what they submitted. This is their, their drawing of the building, sign, allocation. And this is what they're showing, which is, uh, And this is what they're showing, which is, uh, the existing and the proposed. Ma'am, sir, all yours.
Um, so we changed names from the Development Corporation to TDCNNY in twenty twenty. Um, and with that, we have started a sign renewal project. Um, so we replaced our sign at the corner of Area Development, um, and Military Turnpike. And then we placed a new sign at the corner of Industrial Boulevard and Military Turnpike, all within code. Um, this is the main one, our obviously main monument sign that's on a heavily trafficked Route three, um, road. So this sign has been there for over twenty years. We do need to change it, not only for the new branding and the new sign. But we do need to incorporate, um, this sort of revitalization of our new branding project. Um, and to, I guess, get additional views for other potential tenants or employers that come to this area. You know, the sign is very faded. You can't really read it. If it was any smaller, I think the words would be really hard to read. Um, so we're making it as clear as possible, um, for anybody traveling down that road. And that is a forty five mile an hour, um, road right there. So I'm not sure if you want us to go through and read our points in the application.
No, we've read those.
Okay, if that's easier.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
I need you to state your name, both of you, for the record.
Oh, um, Brittany Barron.
And Jay Bouchard.
I thought it was a better question.
When we can answer.
Yeah.
I was told that.
Oh, okay, fair enough, fair enough. So we're just, we're only asking, uh, for very minimal variance here. Just keep it as is.
You're just asking for the height?
Yeah, for the height, um, and.
Uh, square footage is one more square feet over.
Yeah, five square feet over.
Public hearing portion of the meeting is now open. Anybody here like to speak to that matter? And not seeing anybody, but close, you got, uh, county on that one, Steve?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Uh, referral forty two, twenty three, town of Plattsburgh. Zoning Board of Appeals, the applicant, applicant, TDCNNY, area variance at sixty one Area Development Drive. Clinton County Planning Board at its April fifth, twenty twenty three meeting voted seven oh to consider this request a local issue with the following comments forwarded to the town. The town is highly encouraged to reexamine their zoning ordinance and signs, businesses due to large number of variances forwarded to the planning board. As I said before, we did, we have, and this is the new ordinance that was set forth with many people sitting in this.
And I'm sure that must be very frustrating. And we do understand that.
We love it.
Oh, yeah.
Enjoy that water.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got mine about two thirds gone, so I'm doing good. Steve, I told you you're supposed to be back that night.
Sorry, Mel, sorry, Melanie, that was yours.
That is a joke, by the way. Just make sure. All right, so if we do the balancing test, um.
Mr. Chairman, ask one question.
I'll let you.
Your proposed sign, you're showing a one foot space underneath the circle, which looks like it's just space all the way across there. So why couldn't you make that sign one foot last height, which would actually alleviate the five square feet as well as the height? Cause there's nothing down there.
We actually plan on moving, um, this is a concept drawing, so we plan on moving the tech down and actually getting rid of, um, even fully infrastructure. Make Premier Industrial Park lower, the font is bigger, so it'd be more visible to traffic.
And also that's the physical size of the sign.
They're changing it out.
I thought you were just.
We're keeping the stone base. We're keeping a stone base and we're changing the top bit out.
We're taking the, the top completely out.
Yeah.
The mounting plates will remain.
Yeah.
But everything from the, everything from this, the top of this stone down will, will, will stay.
All right, but if, from what I'm looking at, the, the stone base is bigger than your sign and the other sign in your existing is the same size as the stone base.
Correct. Right, the stone base is six inches wider than the sign.
The sign is this wide, this wide here, the stone base is this wide.
Talking about your, your actual length.
Oh, length, yeah, but it's, you know, it's, it's.
Well, I'm just looking at the drawing.
It's enough, it's enough extra distance to be able to get a fastener back there, because we're gonna have to fasten the, the face, the face of that to the, to the masonary.
What words you actually gonna have on the sign?
It's gonna be Premier Industrial Parks and, um, TDCNNY dot com.
Once those are on the design, those, those letters and those words are gonna take up the majority of that sign?
Yeah.
So you could make, if you wanted to, because of where the sign is going and the speed of traffic going by, you could make a safety finding or finding that it's safer to have less words in the current, on the proposed sign, so you can see it better as you're driving by. I think that's what the applicant's getting at is they're not gonna have, the whole sign's gonna be taken up by words when we're there. There's not gonna be empty space out there. That's why they don't want to make it any smaller.
Yeah.
You know, if you wanted to approve the variance and you wanted to look for safety reasons, that's the reason that sets us apart from some other signs, if you wanted to go that direction.
That was the, that was the discussion that was had to get rid of some of the, some lines of text.
Yeah.
My point is, one was discussion of why wasn't that submitted with this package for this variance? Why was that right there submitted?
Well, we submitted this, um, as more of a discussion point. And really, we're thinking you're looking at the footage rather than the wording. And I guess like, there's optics, there's design, there's branding, all involved with it. So to your point, you're not wrong.
I'm just, I'm just wondering why you submitted something to us for us to look at. As soon as I made the comment about, well, you could make it comply by taking out the bomb, now the letters gotta be bigger. But why went to letters bigger when you submitted it? That's what I'm asking.
I think just time constraints. When we applied for the appeal, this was going in the same day, I think I emailed with you. So I, in that case, I should have.
And the reason I bring that up is because on the last one, you just said, because of something you want, that's not a reason for a variance. If those letters right there serve the purpose, but they want bigger letters, it's what they want. So it's, they've gotta, they've gotta prove that, you know, yes, we need bigger letters because of this reason.
Because of the safety factor of driving by and trying to read the sign.
But, but what are they advertising? It's, it's, they're not advertising a store to go into, they're advertising a development area. And they have one at the opposite end of the road too.
So we're marking, they, we're marking all the sort of the main points of our industrial parks. And we have, um, eighteen or nineteen tenants who they employ hundreds and hundreds of employees that, of course, better our area. Um, and attract other employees out of the area to come here and better our community and diversify our community. So we're primarily trying to just revitalize the sign and attract new employees. Also make the current employer someplace proud to be like, I'm part of TDC, this is TDC. And this is like a branding and visualization, of course, revitalization exercise, which I know the town has been involved with as well in their own planning.
So basically, we're just looking at a five foot variance for as far as being oversized and a foot in height, which they could actually get rid of the foot in height by doing some landscaping around it.
And that's, I mean, we're, we're more than happy to do that if that satisfies the, the, the codes problem with the, with the height.
It's not me, I'm just, I'm just bringing up points and trying to make sure everything is fair from the previous one to this one to whoever comes next, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if you wanna see another concept drawing, we can't nip it out.
My opinion, I will not state.
I'm, I'm fine with it. The really, the fact of the matter is they want to keep the, the bottom.
Right, well, I mean, it's, it's an attractive sign of, at that location, it's gonna.
It, it just, just so that you know, it basically doubles the cost of, of the project for us to have that base removed and have new footers, foundations put in for the same exact sign. And there's, structurally, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that.
No.
It makes total common sense to, to use.
Mr. Chairman, just keep in mind that, uh, O'Reilly's, you held to your guns and they're exactly five feet tall.
Consistency. They're around that base, leave the stone there, they're good to go.
As, as long as that.
There you go.
As long as that.
Is that the average height? Is that what you're trying to say?
What's that?
Jesse was mouthing something back there.
I was, I was too much.
Was O'Reilly constructing a new sign or?
Yes, right next to that.
I'm, I, I'll move that we, uh, accept the variance.
So five feet over, five square feet over in actual size and the foot in height.
Yeah.
Okay, second on that one?
Yeah, I will. I will second.
Okay. Show of hands and roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Dune.
Yes.
Melanie Mar.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's for both of them? We're not doing a separate vote for like we did the last time?
I have two variances. Height and square footage.
I just sort of put them both together.
Okay, just so I.
Yeah.
Can listen both that way. Same person, same second, same number of votes.
Thank you.
Come in and pay for your actual time permit.
Just for the record, we have a recusal from, uh, Melanie Mar, uh, for this next, uh, decision. Uh, the next meeting is for, or the next appeal number is twenty two, seventy three. Paul Marshall for seventeen Harlan Drive for an area variance. Request to construct a residence on a property, a property for residential use, which is not allowed in the service center district. Harlan, uh, Drive is a, uh, tucked away little side road that Alan can try to, uh, explain where it is.
Yes, Chairman, this is up towards Company Head. So here's the interchange, Moffett Road here, come down to the four corners. Plattsburgh, um, Hostel Homes is out front here. You've got this one, I forgot what this one's called here, uh, the Tour, the Tour Avenue. This is Harlan Drive here, the old, uh, Channel Five news station's here. So as you come all the way down to the end of this road, there's a triangle lot right here, that's seventeen Harlan Drive. You can see it's all zone commercial, this whole area. This is that triangle lot. So there used to be a house on here. It was removed sometime in the past here. Uh, this garage still sits there. Uh, Mr. Marshall is looking to add a house here. He'd like to keep this as a residential lot, so that's why he's here tonight. Here's what it looks like today. So there's that, uh, that garage. You can see some remnants of, uh, some, um.
Foundation base?
Yeah, basically slabs sitting here, so. And here's what he is proposing. So this is the garage. This would be the, the house he's looking to put on there. It's a little front porch here. Sir, whatever you want to add to it.
Not too much to add, just, uh, yeah, you, we'll use the slab that's there. The, uh, it's keeping in tune with the neighborhood, the, there are, it was residential at one point, so it was a house there. The neighbors are mostly residential except for the mobile home dealer in front of it. But there's a lot of residential around the area. At some point, it's fairly been changed to, uh, commercial.
And what we need to look at is the, the youth variance, correct?
Correct.
And for youth variances, we need to look at the financial aspect of it all. And can you give us some guidance on that aspect of it?
This size of the lot is, by the time you put any, most businesses there and a parking lot, they're, it wouldn't fit. It's a small triangular lot. It just, uh, at a dead end road that's not the best neighborhood. About the only thing that I could see that possibly could fit is a convenience store, but the location would be being on a dead end road and not convenient, it, I don't think that it would be feasible that anybody would want to go that down.
What are you looking for, Mr. Chairman?
I was looking for our list of items as far as substantial financial evidence and things like that.
On the back of your card?
Oh, no, I got that card.
Oh, so the only thing that was submitted was, uh, well, what we have is from Realtor.
Realtor.
Purchase finding contract that I think you had.
No, no, there was the, for the youth variance, there was a list of items that you folks showed down through. I submitted that in the packet.
So, so based on, based off what could actually go in there, based off our use table on the back of the zoning ordinance, the, um, Realtor, you know, letter?
Yeah.
She grouped them together in different categories and why they couldn't be there. Why they wouldn't put it there.
So from Sarah Stansberry, do you have that one?
I got your letter.
That, what I'm saying, that's what we got submitted. We can't walk the applicant through, but this is what was submitted, so. Where it says they didn't get a permit to remove the building. Wasn't a very good, in my opinion. Wasn't a very good letter on behalf of.
Okay, so we have how many different businesses that could fit into that area?
Oh, if we go down the use table?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's a service center, correct?
Twenty, uh, I don't have the number of, and I, I'm gonna go twenty two from, uh, a previous application that we had across the screen. Or is it twenty seven? About forty two. That, but that's including solar, uh, like, you know, solar roof mounted, some recreational and so realistically without primary uses. And this is just, uh, I guess, Mr. Chairman, is thirty one to thirty two other uses could go on that property. If you go through the use table, service center districts. All the way in the back, you have long pages.
It's right after the.
It'll be under, uh, Schedule Edit. Yep, there you go. The next two pages, Service Center. Three quarters away on the right.
What I saw, I kept on seeing the T four and T five.
You gotta hold it out.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So if you go for us. Yeah, the first one doesn't count because it's joined above it where it's used. Townhouse. Agricultural structure. It's not enough land for using that, agricultural use, there's not enough land for using that. If anybody has another opinion, you can yell at me. It's not gonna be an airport or an animal hospital. It's not gonna be an airport or an animal hospital. Automobile bodywork. Fuel station, rental facility, none of these are gonna be back in that area. Automobile sales, detailing.
Brewery.
There were front plates to park.
Well, we do have a automobile repair shop right around the corner, so there's a heavy-duty car shop.
I'm just looking at the, the size of the...
Yeah, that one's smaller. It's actually small, the, the truck place.
It is?
You have the commercial site services that are on the posted stamp right next to it.
Okay, that's...
You.
Yes, okay, on you.
Because there's public water and sewer, so the area goes down.
Yeah, cemetery, that's not gonna happen.
Small one. Pet cemetery.
Absolutely, you're right. A clinic is not the type of location for a clinic. Contractor storage yard.
So be careful about just making the assumptions that you're making. It's just reviewing the, the discussion we have with the applicant for the movie theater. We help that applicant to a very high standard, who can write a report about all the things that couldn't, cannot, potentially be done there with, you know, not everything in that report made sense, but I don't know that it's necessarily the board's function to be doing this test. Maybe the board could tell the applicant what it's looking for, and he would wanna ask to take a table for a month or come back with further information if that's what you're looking for. I don't want the board to be providing information that may or may not be accurate to the applicant as far as this application goes.
We're supposed to have a list of all the different uses that would be able to be in that location.
Yeah, and I thought that I had, I had grouped them together in that letter. The letter that Sarah had.
So what, what basically needs to happen with an application such as this is, the applicant needs to provide the board a list of everything that could go in that application.
Go line by line, each one?
And basically say, yeah, exactly, why can't I put a cemetery? Because it would cost X, you know, whatever that is. You've gotta make the argument that everything that's allowed is unfeasible to you, or unfeasible in this location, with dollar sense, not just, I don't think this would work. You've gotta have some sort of proof to back up something as to why you need one of those. Because then, if, if you can prove to the board, nothing that's allowed to go in here, then you get to the second site by making a pitch, but what I wanna do should go in here, why? Let's take it over that first hurdle, like you didn't really consider the second part, which I know sounds like a huge, heavy lift.
For the investment that I'm doing on this, I'm not, the sale is contingent on whether I get this or not. And for me to invest the, that much money into something that may or may not happen is just not worth it.
So maybe the current owner should be the one doing this and say, I've owned this for X number of years, and here's why nothing else would work, the only thing that's gonna work is the sale to you. That's the person maybe that should be doing this, though.
I, I don't know.
I know.
I know that I'm here, and if it doesn't work, I'm just gonna walk away from it. And if you wanna increase it, receive tax money from this. Otherwise, it's gonna be an empty lot that...
Who, who is the current owner of this?
I believe that the, I believe...
Estate of Joseph Lee.
Yes, the person passed away.
So another problem I see is without, without something from the executor or executives about estate giving you the authority to make this application. Like, the estate owns that property right now, you don't. So you're in essence making an application to change the use of a property you don't own.
Right, and I was told that by having the contingency in the contract for the land...
Right, so your contract is getting changed, I get it, but you need, this board needs the current owner's permission to even hear this application.
Yeah, that's what I was told by zoning was that if I had brought it, or if I had the contingency in the contract by the land, that that was the permission.
Because both, both, both agencies have to sign that contingency. Who's the executor of the state? So we got one from the Realtor, I'm going through it now. You got this one from the Realtor? This is a hard pull, I'm gonna, while they look at this, so it says right here, Tony Anderson, executor of estate of Joseph Lee, so it is. Our people know what to go. It's weird, happens, on page five.
No, I get that, I just wanna say, where's the contingency inherent with this?
In the, in the block right above the signature.
On the other place?
Uh, this seller must provide purchaser with a stating letter that he can request a variance. So what this is, is, I understand where you're coming from.
Right, there's no, contract says seller must provide purchaser with a letter saying he can request the variance. Do we have that? Do you have a letter from him?
I'm a seller.
Yeah.
The application to submit to the town prior to this. So what Henry's trying to say, or Mr. Hale's trying to say, is you have to have every single use. A use variance, ninety percent of use variances get denied. Because you gotta, there's a balancing test, there's a five balancing test that's gonna achieve it, what can go there. The list of all the things that Henry was going down, you as the applicant have to provide for them to justify, not just because it's gonna go vacant. Because it doesn't matter if it's small or if it's big.
In the letter we submitted, I had grouped things together to, all of these don't work because of the size of the lot.
Each one has to be detailed, each one, dollar cents, what it is, the whole deal. Right across the road, there was a project submitted for a drive-in theater. They have to hit every single one, not, because I want it.
No.
Use variance is not...
I was, I was told by zoning.
But again, we can help you, we can't fill it out for you.
Then, I, no, I was told I could group things in the, which is what I did.
Sarah's letter, there is many items that were listed, but there's sometimes not no rationale associated with all these items, too, so. But that's what we need to look at.
So if you, there's two things, you can either table it, or you can ask for a vote. Those are your two options. And I say that as long as the attorney feels like this application deems it, Perry Anderson, executive state of Joseph Lee, dot lot verified. And if you would say that that's not...
Well, I mean, the contract's contingent upon, I get that, but say the applicant, this applicant goes through, gets the variance, and for some reason doesn't close.
I understand.
And the contract says, will be provided with a letter from the seller, which is not the contract, there would be a separate letter that would say, you know, so-and-so has the permission of this estate, which owns this property, to go seek the variance for this purpose. So we're missing kind of a key step to contain in the contract. So I, I don't love it for that reason either. I understand the argument that the contract purchase is contingent upon getting a variance, so everything that's being said makes sense, I just think we're missing a key piece of paper.
So you can address whatever, whichever way you would like to move forward with this, whether...
Do you wanna table it, to be able to come up with some more rationale?
I don't. I, no, I don't think so, we can have a vote, just...
But we really don't have the information, according to the attorney, to, to go much further and if we don't have the listing of every single item that could be...
So you need a line by line, each item, and I need to go do it somehow, do research and tell you how much money or why this isn't applicable, applicable. I have to go pay somebody to do that, like, to do that research.
Pay somebody, or you could, I mean, Sarah's done a lot of it for you with some that she's put together, just being able to...
She submitted the letter I wrote. So I just, I do not have the ability right now to go do that research. If it's just saying, like in that letter, that, you know, common sense, that, you know, a shopping mall isn't gonna work on a 2.6 acre lot. I can do that, but if you want me to say, well, a cemetery that holds eight bodies is not going to work because it's gonna bring X number of dollars in, I can't do the research to find out how much money every line is gonna cost. So it's...
You know, my opinion is, is that it's not the location for a cemetery.
Right, I, I'm just saying, if you need some analysis of each line, I don't have the ability to do that right now, I'm working seventy-two hours a week, and that is unfeasible for me to be able to do. But if you, if I can just write, I guess, line by line, I will do that, but I can't.
I guess that's the way I would go, you know, go line by line.
Okay, that's what I had asked if I had to do, and somebody told me that, no, you don't have to go line by line, you can group everything, so.
Some of them do group together, but there are other ones that are not included in there.
And it's not just that, let's just be realistic, there's four other items that still have to be addressed, not just the line by lines. If you could read the four other ones, you have to meet, so it's not just saying if you go line by line, there's four other use variances criteria that has to be met for use variance. It's not just showing financial hardship, like with Rob Steele was coming, if the Steeles were coming tonight, they still didn't hit their four, and they had a financial evidence, and they had some other stuff.
Financial one is the main one that is the toughest for me. And cannot realize a reasonable return substantiated by competent financial evidence. And again, that is for the seller, not necessarily for him.
Right, so you may wanna get a letter from the seller of the estate indicating how long this property's been on the market, if there's been any offers, price reductions, then you can kinda get to that level of, this is the only bike they've had in eighteen months. You know, something like that would help, but so the first balancing test is, is what we talked about also uses, then there's three other factors, the first one is what Henry just said.
Yeah, and alleged hardship is unique, does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood. Requested variance will not alter essential character of the neighborhood, and alleged hardship has not been self-created.
I thought that was all covered in the other stuff, that's... And the neighborhood is already residential.
Well, there's, and Steve said, the, the one visa place, repair place is a smaller...
You can't say it's, if Allen zooms out right across here, it's commercial. For fifty-eight years, it's been commercial. So in the, or when I say commercial, Service Center District, we have to, they have to go the balancing test, so I'm just gonna throw it out there, right across, can't say the substantial part because right in front of it, it's commercial, the next lot down is commercial, the next lot down is commercial, if you're going vertical.
The lot that is showing right next to it and the one next to that are both residential.
Substantial portion of the neighborhood, so when you have the substantial portion of the neighborhood, it's been service center for twenty-two years, minimum twenty-two years, so it hasn't changed. Those were called pre-existing non-forming, and they're supposed to eventually go away. So there was a variance that was given for one that we set up there, and there was one that was denied around the corner. So when the balancing test is saying, is a substantial portion of the neighborhood, you have to provide those numbers, we can't do that for you, it's your application. So when you say, well, substantially, the other side of the road is not, it's commercial. So no matter if you own it or somebody else, if someone's smashing homes or selling homes, or there's trucks, there's trailers, there's cars, there's dump trucks going, you never have the right to complain because your substantial portion of the neighborhood is not residential. It's Service Center District, which allows a light hammer factory, where they could have hammers patterned in there. So that's substantial neighborhood for you, and they work for the next person to be like, oh my God, they're selling homes, they're there, they could go twenty-four hours a day. So that's why we gotta understand, yes, you understand that there's an interstate right in the backyard, it's like every country's on, I got an interstate running through my backyard, I got commercial in the front. That's why these districts, and I'm gonna say districts, for a code officer sitting here, you could never say, Jesus, Steve, I got cars in the back, the whole deal, I can't sleep. They gave you a variance to go into a substantially different neighborhood, so, hey, this is the application that you said, this is allowed, this is allowed, this is allowed. And then if you ever came to complain or have a hardship against the town, now we have the financial evidence that you provided showing why you wanted to go there. So don't come back and argue for the next person or the next person. But the balancing test has to be made when you say suspend. Number two, substantial portion of district or the neighborhood. If you said seventy percent, but it's, it's not, you have three different ones going right down the, the main road. Then you wrap around, then you have another development going in the back that's seventeen acres of proof farm centers going over there. You're gonna have that, then the potential of the old PTZ, so it's got the potential of having a lot of neighborhood commercial. So that's the balancing test that this board has to achieve. Protecting the rights of the homeowner is the first thing, but when you put a home in a Service Center District, these are some of the, the steps that you got to achieve. And they have to justify the means to it. I know it's a lot for you, and I know it's, it's not a huge investment, but it's still, the board has to make sure they treat you the same way as they did the person across the road, no matter how big or small the development, and protection. So that's what they're asking for, it's not them being meanies.
No, I, no, just saying, I don't just...
So would you like to table it, then?
I guess so.
Make a motion that we accept the, the table of...
Sure, I'll make that motion.
You got a second?
Sure.
Show of hands, and then roll call vote that we can table it.
We have to put a date on it?
You want a month, two months?
A month, because otherwise I might do.
All right, thank you.
I didn't take a, do a roll call.
Yes.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marian Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Duane.
Yes.
Melanie Mar. Oh, I'm sorry, she did. She's abstaining.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Are we all done?
Do it, sure.